Under God, indivisible, with the very essence of this world.
Need a motion for the agenda?
Convinced.
A motion for a second?
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Post. Public input, this is the time and place for discussion items from the honorary on the agenda with a time limit of three minutes each.
Do I want to talk? I'll talk.
Public, are you on the agenda?
Do I have to stand up?
Sure.
Okay, is this good? All the way up here? This is taller than I am. I want to make complaint about the cemetery. There, I did a drive-through and what I seen was thirteen spots that are not up to standard for Memorial Day coming up. They need dirt, they need grass seed, a lot of them are sowed down right before the cemetery, shouldn't be like that. And then my second thing I want to complain about is the inspections on rental property. Why should we have to have them inspected every two years and pay money for it? We don't have any complaints is what it started out. If they complain, then it was brought up. And there is eighteen, I think, cities in county, and nine of them have inspections. So why this listing?
Why do we have them?
Yes.
We, we got them just basically because...
You had a complaint.
Some of them had complaints. And I mean, it's bad that one apple ruined, one bad apple ruined the whole.
So you're going to penalize all of us and we have to pay it?
Or we don't have, we can't just pick and choose when we have an ordinance for inspection for rental.
But why don't you have, when you have complaints is what it started out, and then all of a sudden, it's already passed through?
What do you mean, sorry, passed through?
It passed through with the three readings or two or whatever, and now we have it. And we have to pay it every two years and have inspection. It started out being, if there was complaints, then there would be inspection. But now we have to pay every two years.
Anybody else? Anybody else?
No.
Now, for the inspection, the, yeah. So like, how much is it for, for, do, when you had the inspection, or do you have to pay like?
I have to pay the inspection, seventy-five dollars, and I have to have that fifty dollars to start with because it's listed or whatever as a rental.
It's a fifty-dollar inspection fee, then seventy-five dollars every two years. They have violations, and they get building inspection, but that's not been very often. Typically, once they get approved, it's more of a formality going forward, but they still pay the seventy-five dollar inspection fee. And this happened before I was here, but it was my understanding there were two large complexes that this was kind of tailored around or because of. So, that's all my background is on.
Anybody want to revisit this at all?
As a general, it's kind of cost to do a business, and the inspection's done by Lynn County for us. And so, we are profiting from that, aren't we? The money goes to, to the Lynn County inspection people. And I think that's a way of things, well, all your Cedar Rapids and everything is really worse than...
Would it be different if you had a situation where there's same apartment three times, you wouldn't enjoy it?
Is it possible three times in a row?
Well, I mean, yeah, whatever. But I mean...
I mean, we, we can revisit, we can look at this. I mean, I just need to know, we've got to make a decision on this thing.
We don't.
I just need to know, if you guys want to revisit this, and we'll get it on the agenda. Document it, or, I mean...
I have no problem revisiting it.
Right. We're going to put it on the agenda, or revisit it, or we can talk about it, we can make decisions on it. Because we can't make, we can't make a decision because it ain't on the agenda.
You could help us by bringing any surrounding towns or something like that, just make sure we're kind of, or we feel in balance on stuff.
Okay.
So, who's, I got a question. Is the, the, the city responsible for, like, leveling?
Big guys out there now. Their medical care.
Okay. Because it's different.
Well, we usually do that, don't we? Before Memorial Day, try to fix up those grounds.
We just, there's a bunch of it, it just needs the grass kids to come up and, or take the gator out, starting in the mule, starting tomorrow, watering everything to get seed to pop up. So, I got the list of all the ones we've added dirt to and everything.
Talking about the seed.
Right, I, I went out there, I think there was seed under one that I saw.
Yeah, we've got, I mean, they spent a full day out there trying to get it back up.
Talking about seed, could you pull like that mat that you put over the park, and that seemed to go real quick.
We also like rain.
Yeah.
That's it.
It can go longer than anything.
So...
Don't get out there and work on it. Anybody else?
Have you got any suggestions? Give them when they come around?
Hi, my name's Bree. I'm not going to get very close because my voice carries. I'm an area manager for Champions. We are coming into the L E C C, and we're part of Mount Vernon as well. We serve ages and things through school age, and then we'll be in Mount Vernon as well for school age completely. We're looking to have a family night, that's Monday night, with food trucks, so that we can bring the communities together. This family event will have face painting, food, multiple different vendors will be there, and we're just looking for permission to move forward with this.
Where, where's it at?
The park, the city park. Yep.
Mary, that's also five B is the address.
Yep.
It's a, it's a general.
Yeah, then we want somebody to...
So they have your email?
Yep. Yeah, last week's.
Yep, it's on, it's on our general.
Yeah.
So, I'll, when we get to it, I'll talk to you. You can just stay there because this is going to, you're going to be right, this is going to be right. Anybody got anything else? Question, possible action, reference to May twenty-sixth meeting, in favor of warrants.
Uh, this is just our formality, uh, May twenty-sixth, we decided not to have the meeting since it's Memorial Day. As we stand currently, there's no pressing needs prior to the June ninth meeting. If that changes, I will let you know about a special meeting. So, otherwise, we just need a motion to pay the bills.
Need a motion? Still moved? A second?
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Aye. Post. Question, possible action, reference to Champions as a L E C C family event. Okay, now, that, now here's what we're going to approve it. So it's going to be at the park from what time?
Five to seven.
Five to seven next month, right?
Yep.
Um, what, can I ask you a question? When, when is Champion going to take over the L E C C?
Uh, sorry, it'll be, uh, sorry, July second, Tuesday, July second.
So it's Champions a, like a for-profit company?
Yes, it's for-profit.
So you're going to take over July second?
Yes. Yep, so this will be like a meet, and then they'll be taking over Mount Vernon on June, and right in June.
Is this the new look for schools?
Yes. Well, we, I've been in Cedar Rapids for the last four years, and, but we've been in, I would say their great debut for the last eight years.
Got a motion? Make a motion. Got a motion for non-use of the park?
Yep.
Second to approve the use of the park. Got a motion, second, on favor?
Aye.
Post.
Thank you. Have a good night.
Resolution eighteen, one twenty-five, funds transfer.
Uh, so this is our debt service payments, um, for this year. We have to do it, usually do this in May, for our payments that are due in June. There we go, there's water, TIF, sewer, and our debt service.
Motion to approve resolution eighteen dash twenty twenty-five.
Got a motion of a second?
Second.
Nate?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Rick?
Aye.
Aye.
Resolution nineteen, nineteen twenty twenty-five, approve M O U for attempted agreement development agreement with Elite Stone Abatement.
So, um, I know I talked about this at the last meeting, um, this is not DTIF agreement, this is not the development agreement. This is just, um, the verbiage that we are intending to negotiate a development agreement with Elite Stone. I've been working with Maggie on this. Um, we're looking at a ten-year TIF abatement of eighty percent through that, the course of that ten years, um, and not to exceed one point five million. If you look over on the chart, um, the nice thing with this is, uh, it's either or. So it either goes to ten years, or it's one point five, um, million. And the best part is, is they have to perform to get the money. So, um, as you can see, the tax increment, um, of value is six point seven million for the factory, and the ninety percent rollback. So the taxable increment is just over six million, um, and then you got the TIF rate. And what's nice with that is, is when we have this development agreement, we get to keep all the TIF, uh, funding, so none of it would go to the county or the school under this, um, contract. Um, they, those two entities can do the same with other properties, uh, to keep from us. But, um, basically, if you look at that, um, you can see how the, the numbers would add up. This one here goes to one, three, five, one. Um, you can change that formula up top through the course of the years, and this is a stagnant. So this would assume that he's not going to increase the value, which you know happens. Budget lines and brothers, uh, their values increased year to year, so therefore, they never made the ten years because they met the not to exceed number. Um, if for whatever reason, um, that number is much smaller, let's say, um, just for the sake of the math here, around three point four, which would be half, he's only going to get half of that money. He's still going to get eighty percent of what the half is that he pays in. Um, I did talk about, um, extending a hundred and fifty feet of Cryberg Boulevard. Um, as you can see, the city repayment, so we pay that money upfront, but then we would also get to tap into the remaining thirty-three thousand dollars, uh, for the first three years, up to the amount of money it would cost us to, um, put that street in along with the engineering fees. So, it would be a, basically a loan to ourselves to do that work, and then we'd be paid back through the TIF funds that are paid by the developer. So again, this document is just an intent, um, to take necessary steps to the urban renewal. Um, basically, what this does is this goes to his bank, um, so he can begin working on, uh, dirt work and getting ready to build. Um, our processes after this would be, we would go to bond council, it'd be Maggie and I and Christina, meeting with bond council to get all the paperwork figured out for that, get the approval from bond council. And then it would actually come back to you guys for a public hearing and a formal vote on the plan. And this tonight is just the intent, um, to start that negotiation.
I make a motion to approve resolution nineteen dash twenty twenty-five.
Got a motion of a second?
Second.
Kevin?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Rick? Nate?
Aye.
Aye.
Resolution twenty twenty twenty-five, place certification wage increase. Travis and Morris?
So, this is for Chris Rodman. Um, we've had fifty cent increments for all your grades. Chris passed his final two licenses. He's now grade two for water treatment, water distribution, and wastewater. Which means for the city that if I get hit by a bus tonight, our drinking water, Chris can operate the whole thing, and with him holding the grade two, the D R. They, they don't, they don't have to. I've never seen them not allow the city to operate under the grade two. I use working to get his grade three.
Waste water?
But...
That's on the wastewater?
Yeah, in the wastewater, yeah. But as far as drinking water, it would just be, my name would come off, his name would go on, it would just be an easy transition, so...
So you're going to have to have grade two for?
For water, yeah.
Got a motion?
I make a motion.
Say. Got a motion of a second? Nate?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Rick?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Aye.
So public hearing's for July fourteenth, references changes to fence regu- fence regulation ordinance.
Uh, this is in reference to some nuisances in our internal policies, and I want to make sure that we put that into the fence regulation ordinance. So, I'll get that drafted up, and we'd like to set a public hearing to discuss this on June fourteen.
June fourteen, there you go.
June, July?
Actually, that should be, uh...
It said July.
July fourteenth, sorry, I had to typo on my sheet.
June?
What kind of changes are you looking at?
Um, so currently, if we have, um, a fence on the property line, um, we ask that the, say if your neighbor puts up a fence, we have them move it three feet inside their property so that they can get the trash in between the fences cleaned up, and stuff doesn't collect in between, and you can mow between it.
So what, what day are we doing, July or June?
July. Let me just make sure that... July is second, fourth.
Yeah, it's July fourteenth.
July.
July fourteenth, oh.
Yeah, the hard, the hard part is since July fourteenth.
Yeah, July fourteenth. I just typoed that, sorry. So, um, I need a motion, set the public hearing.
Motion to set the public hearing for July fourteen.
Got a motion of a second?
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Post. Uh, nothing. City engineer? I have nothing for them. But it works.
Uh, I've been working with Brandon, V N K, and Brecky with some of the dirt restoration and stuff. Um, Brecky's in town adding more topsoil to the areas, trying to get, get a decent base so we can throw seed down and get the, where we dug the water main up, the restoration done there. Um, Brandon, you going to talk about Alliance?
Yeah.
Okay. And then, as far as us, we're still on track to start the water main project first part of June. Um, Si took, uh, one tree down that was going to be in the way of our digging, and Brandon and I met out there and in front of Ed Clark's with all the utilities and taking the tree down, we deemed it was going to be better to pop out of the street there and make our connection. So, that's the reason we didn't take that tree down, and we're going to be out in the street. We just, there's other utilities under there, and we can safely, now we can dig through that stump without ruining gas or fiber while we were doing it, so...
Any questions for the post?
First one. Um, soccer finished up last week, so we will transition into our summer baseball and softball programs. I'll start putting teams together this week, a lot of coaches meeting next week, and then we'll start the week of the twenty-sixth out at the sports complex. Uh, everything's been turned over to the school for their baseball and softball season, because everything's going well there. Um, been working on an emergency responder class, and I'm getting ready to test for that here soon. And other than that, I don't think I have anything else, just a lot of mowing. Brian and I have been busy mowing, we've eaten, and trying to get the parks cleaned up and stuff, so...
They got, they were grading.
Parking at the sports complex.
Ran it out there a couple times when soccer was going on. We got cars all, we got not nearly enough parking for that out there.
This is something that Brandon and I have discussed already, and it's something that we are looking at, and it's something definitely that needs to be...
Do we have a parking lot on the west side of that? Wouldn't do one design for a lot of the west side of that.
Yeah, it's a, it's a continuation. That was something Brayton and I have been talking about, we're going to have to figure something out. I mean, I go out there with my kids and vans and, you know. I mean, you know, getting the parking lot when it's fit to paint, that, that's going to help, but also, you know, you got people parking all over the place, and, you know, they leave gaps where other cars could get into, so... Not going to solve all the issues, but, um, we're just going to figure something out.
Well, I know the south side of that, right, there's cars parked on that portion of the street all the time. You know where I'm talking about? Down from the federated church, towards the white barn, there's a house in there. I don't know if he's got automatic approval law right there or not, but...
Well, if it's like in front of residence, we can't control, as long as they aren't street stores, you know, they're not there repeatedly for, with the seventy-two dollars.
Well, you might want to start this law on some of those.
But that's something we definitely can do is parking out there.
Anything else you think of Brayton? All right.
So, um, our current library assistant last day is next Wednesday, or next Thursday, or sorry, this Thursday. Um, so we put out an application, an opening for a library assistant or librarian. Um, I've talked with John about it already, since he's on the personnel, uh, committee of the city council, and with Brandon and the library board, and everybody is agreed. Um, what I've done is changed the title from library assistant to librarian, um, increased the pay from eighteen to twenty dollars per hour. And then, um, I got eight applicants for the librarian role. Um, so I think we're going to be able to hire a really good librarian, we'll be able to do children's programming and, and increase our children's outreach to about like a weekly story time. Um, this rate of pay was, fits within our current budget, it's been approved for next year, uh, for up to sixteen and a half hours per week throughout the year, at, at the current budget, at twenty dollars an hour. So I just wanted to make you all aware of what the plan was, and hear if there's any, any issues that you might have with it.
Very good. Any questions?
Do you have any programs coming up this month?
Yes. So we're doing the kickoff of summer reading, May twenty-eighth. Uh, Drayton is going to set up a fire pit out at the city park. We're going to have a storyteller come, just like last year, we'll have smores. Uh, the bank is going to come and bring T-shirts for everybody, um, and that's the summer reading kickoff. Um, we're also doing an ongoing program called Dog Tales, where a woman brings in her trained dog, and kids get to read to the dog, and so that's continuing on throughout the summer. Um, our next adult program is May twenty-first, it's the Wednesday night. We're going to show a documentary from PBS about libraries and their value to American black society, and, um, then Grace Chamberlain from the Cole Public Library is going to come over, and she and I are both going to answer questions and talk about different issues, um, that Iowa libraries and actually libraries across the country are facing right now. For example, um, the Institute for Museum and Library Services is the only federal funding that provides funding to libraries across the country, and that was recently cut, um, in the federal spending cuts. So we'll talk about how that's affecting Iowa libraries. Already state-level programs have been cut because they didn't get federal funding for them. Um, so we'll just talk about what's going on with libraries and answer any questions that people have. Um, and then we're continuing with our second Saturday event, so June fifteenth, which is Father's Day weekend, we'll have a book sale, and we're going to have a big book sale. People can come in and get a whole bag of books for five dollars. We're going to get grocery bags, and they can fill, fill the bags for five dollars. Um, and we're also going to have a speaker come that day and do like a cooking demonstration and some live music. So, there's many more events coming up.
Any questions?
Sounds very interesting. I could use a cookie.
Yeah, and actually, I don't know if I've told you this already, but, you know, we got the hundred thousand dollars, um, donation from the Chi-Hop family. And so, we're going to use that to do more cooking classes this fall. So September through December, we'll do a monthly cooking class with a professional chef. He's going to come in, he's a Czech, he's from the Czech Republic, and he's going to do like a dinner class. Southeastland is going to provide, uh, childcare during this, so parents can come to the events. So I'm very excited about these monthly. It'll be like in the evening, people can cook, and then, uh, like have dinner together after they go.
Very good. I'm horrible, I mean, I've never, I don't own a library. So do you have any new shelves?
Yeah, we do, we have them ordered, and they're going to come install them after summer reading is done. So probably September, they'll come in, and we'll close the library for two weeks, up to two weeks, while Travis tears out the old ones and we get the new ones brought in and installed.
And then we'll make you go in there and look at them.
I was going to say, but in my defense, I didn't even go do a class at school, clearly.
Yeah, stop in sometimes so you can see what the current ones look like.
I know what the current ones look like.
They've been very usable.
What's that?
They've been very usable for a lot of years.
Yeah, they've been lovely.
Uh, please depart. Uh, report should, should have been submitted. Um, we had speed trailer out on East Main, um, we just moved that over to West Main, uh, along the bike trail there. Hopefully, we can, uh, alleviate some, some of that speed traffic that goes through there. Other than that, preparing for boat's departure.
Just going to leave the library, thanks. Any questions for Jason? Yeah, most?
Um, annual report was submitted. Um, if you have any questions on that, I'm, I'm here to take them. Otherwise, it's been a busy start to the summer. You know, May's usually a little bit more of a lull for us, and then it kicks off in June, but we've been running pretty hard in May. Um, so, I'm looking forward to my, my vacations coming up, getting out of here for a little bit. But, uh, otherwise, any questions on the annual report?
I think you're doing a good job, I really do.
Thank you.
Any questions?
Baruch. Um, new four oh nine is here and it's in service. Um, I went out last week and picked it up, and, uh, came back, and we put it in service that night. Travis has taken the old four oh nine and, uh, started to get that transitioned over to public works vehicle. That is all I have, fire.
When are you going to decel?
Um, wait for Rick to call, hopefully end of this week. Feel free to walk over there at the meeting if you want to take a look at it. Any questions for Baruch? Sure, you're not sure. All right, um, Alliance Energy, um, has sent out letters, um, several weeks ago to those that are going to be impacted by the new gas main work that they're doing. Essentially, they're putting in new gas mains everywhere, including Market Street and all the avenues, um, north of there. They do go through and do a sewer inspection, so that way, uh, because they do all the boring underground, so they will do inspect your sewer, they will need to knock on your door, um, schedule a time to meet with you to look at that. Basically, what it does, it protects them so you can't come back and say that they hit my sewer. Obviously, if they did, it would be mitigated, but this is just a step to cover them. Um, so they're going to be up there, um, putting up door hangers, I believe as we speak, and then, um, trying to get ahold of you to, uh, schedule that. So, um, this is, be a pretty extensive project. They are, uh, moving all, abandoning all the old gas mains that are in the alley. Um, and then they move those to the front, um, on the avenue side, and as I talked about last time, we did, um, get them to move them opposite side of the water mains in most areas, so that way, it's one less thing we have to navigate around, um, if we have water main issues. And there's a couple streets up there that will need water main work, um, very soon, and so, um, this will help alleviate that. Um, been working with Mark and Lynn County on several nuisances. Uh, the next hundred and fiftieth, uh, birthday of Lisbon Planning is May twenty-first, seven P M. here at city hall. Fairway is doing open interviews here at city hall on May fourteenth, I believe that's from noon to seven. For anyone that has someone looking for, uh, full-time and part-time work, I believe they're hiring a total of forty. Sports, when's that? May fourteenth. Um, sports complex, uh, grading is still ongoing. Should be wrapping that up here, I would think, uh, weather pending by the end of the month, um, as far as the majority of it. We had our insurance renewal come through Blue Cross. We also had our staff meeting and safety meeting, safety talk, uh, here at city hall last week to go over that and our open enrollment period. Travis and the guys have been working over on this splash pad donor...
Uh, Travis and the guys have been working over on the splash pad donor wall. Uh, if you recall, there was a bunch of bricks that were over there that uh, had people's names on it that donated to the splash pad. Uh, they fabricated a really nice uh, way to display those that are up off the ground, four concrete around it. So here the next couple of weeks, uh, take a look at that. Um, hopefully they'll get that finished up. We'll let you know when that's done. Travis talked about the water main project on West Main. Um, it's gonna be after school gets out and the goal is to have everything put back and pretty much back to normal by Socceroast Days. So that's uh, it'll help be in the parking so we don't have to build the road very far. Uh, we'll make sure it's good to go for Socceroast Days. Uh, we talked about Brecky in town. If you have issues along the water main project, um, both V N K, Travis and I are on top of it. Uh, making sure that it gets put back how it should be. And then I will be attending a utility conference in Des Moines on Wednesday.
Any questions?
Got a question? I'm in that area where there, on Second Avenue and, um. I complain because it's a year and I don't have grass. And I don't, well, I have the grass seed now laying on a dry, dry, mud road, mud top. Um, and still nothing, there's been, that just doesn't work. You know, when you've got old, in my experience, um, with uh, totally dried dirt. Grass seeds thrown on top. And it was the guys that we hired, you know, not our guys. They're, um, it's not raked in, it's not anything. If you go look at it, I, I won't have grass there this year.
Well, like you said, they're going through now, um, I think it's their intent to finish up this week. And then um, there will be water on it. Uh, so we just, this is part of the process. Um, they have to do it within the seeding window, which closes at the end of May. And um, it's just kind of a wait and see and then they just keep coming back. Um, Suda specs has a particular, a specific uh, spec that you have to follow. And um, there's, there's certain windows and, you know, they, they keep having to come back. And they have to get to seventy percent stand um, per that spec. So uh, they just keep coming back and there's a five-year bond on the project, so um, you just keep monitoring it and.
So the good news is I only have five years to wait.
As much as.
Huh?
As such as.
So you, you said that watering, who's gonna, who's gonna water these one? Did you?
Well, I'm not gonna water the waste setup now.
Um, so we're still working that out with uh, V N K and um, the contractor. But um, it was my goal to um, get everything prepared correctly, seeded correctly, and we would help out with the water. Uh, need to make sure that uh, it's done correctly for us to have the time and resources toward that.
What else, any questions for Brandon? Nate?
I don't have any time.
No.
Rick? John?
Uh, congratulations to Chris on passing his grade two. That's all I have.
Kevin?
Nothing.
Yeah, I have nothing. Uh, possible close session pursuant to code of violence, section twenty-one point five. Now I evaluate professional capacity of individuals, appointment, hiring, performance or discharge is being considered or necessary to prevent needless and irreverible injury to that individual or reputation. Add individual request for close session. Grayton, would you like to go on to close session?
Yes, please.
Motion to go on to close session?
Motion to go on to close session.
Motion of second? On favor?